The applicant is William Fender and Florence Richardson for a site plan review to raise the existing building and construct two duplexes for four residential units on .43 acres located at 27 Elm Archway, Falmouth. And we have somebody for the applicant, please.
Sorry, there's no easel. Can I borrow that easel?
You surely can.
My name is Michael McGrath. I'm a registered engineer and professional land surveyor. I work for Homes of McGrath. We prepared the site plan that's been filed before you for site plan review. The first plan I want to show you is the existing conditions plan. This is Elm Archway. Elm Archway is a public road. There is a sort of a different configuration to the street line in that there's almost a teardrop-shaped cul-de-sac. There's an existing building that's located right here. And the proposal was to tear down the existing building that's shown like this, remove most of the, or some of the large pavement. There is stripes on the ground, so there is parking spaces that are half on the public road and half off, and there's just big masses of pavement. And when we take down this existing building and build two buildings, these are duplex and this is a duplex, where we're going to reconfigure the parking so that we have dedicated parking for the new buildings. The dedicated parking is, there's two for each unit, and then there's two guest spaces. We have revised the plan a couple times. The first one was a question about whether or not we had the required area of a parking space completely on the lot, so we revised the plan once to make sure we did that. When we did that revision, we reconfigured these slightly. This is the final. We originally had the drainage systems to be basically astride the lot lines, and we moved them so that the leaching systems are all within the public road. There was questions about the grading here, so we clarified the grading. And then the town engineer at the Board of Appeals asked us to widen this to 18 feet. So from a property line back, we have widened the roadway that's left to be 18 foot wide. So I believe that we have been cooperative as far as addressing the issues that have been brought up before the various staff members. Brian asked me to clarify and make sure that people could come out of these parking spaces with a passenger car. Here, there's a little retaining wall, so this was the most confined space, and I showed him using a computer program called Auto Turn that a car can get out of here, and I also gave him one that showed a car can get out of that space. So I believe that this is a plan suitable for your approval, and I stand ready to answer any questions. Accompanying me tonight is Laura Moynihan and Bill Fender.
Okay. First, Brian, do you have any comments on this plan?
Oh, for site plan purposes, I think Mike addressed all the issues that were brought by the engineers or the planners. Good to meet you today. One other issue that Ralph brought up, I didn't have the answer for him. I could ask Mike to review as regards to the lighting on the landscape plan, if there's light. That's the only thing that's outstanding. Not a big issue.
I didn't design any lighting. Bill, are there going to be lights? You have to come up. Are there going to be single post lights next to the parking spaces?
Yes. I plan to put a post light in front of each unit, an outdoor light by every door.
You'd want to see that on the plan, would you not, Brian?
Well, that's their intention, so we'll change the plan or write it up that way. So I, outstanding issue, Ralph asked you that answer, I could go.
Okay. Does anybody else have any? Jim?
Is this a, it looks like to me that it's a significant reduction of the parking spaces in the right of way. Do you have any percentages on that? I mean, the existing plan looks like, one, two, a lot of spaces are split.
There are at least 20 spaces existing, and we're going down to 10.
And of the 10 spaces, how much of the square footage of those spaces are in the right of way? It looks like four. Well, give me a guess.
Nine by 19, let's say 180 square feet times, there's a, I'm not good at math on my feet.
It's supposed to do it in your head, Mike.
2,000 square feet of pavement on the lot of, that is dedicated parking spaces.
My question is, was how much of the proposed plan is still in the right of way for parking?
None. We have conforming parking spaces from this is, I'm sorry.
That's what I was getting at. So you removed all those parking spaces that were in the right of way.
Yes, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
And now none of them are. That was my question. You're saying that none of them are in the right of way now?
The, this is a conforming parking space of nine by 19, or nine by 18. And so each one is a conforming parking space beyond the street line.
That's why, that's my question.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood you.
That's what I was getting at. Thank you.
Maybe I should sit down instead of being on it.
Does anybody else have any questions with Mike? Okay. So then, this is a site plan review, so we don't need any motions. We just have a decision coming up at our next meeting, I assume. Public comment, sorry about that. Does anybody from the public have any comment to make? I didn't see anybody. That's why it didn't trigger it. I'm sorry about that. Okay. Laura.
For the record, I'm Laura Moynihan, an attorney. I actually represent the property owner, Mrs. Richardson, whose family has owned this inn for many, many years, and her son Peter is here tonight. Mr. McKenzie represents Mr. Fender, but he fell ill today, so was not able to attend. I just wanted to add on the lighting, just so you're aware of it, that this project is before the zoning board of appeals, and it was opened at the last hearing, and there was testimony on the lighting in the back of the existing inn building. One of the abutters had asked that that lighting that's there now, that apparently shines on the neighbors, would be eliminated, and because of that, he was supportive or would, you know, like to ask if that would be done, and without objections to the project. So this lighting that will be proposed here with the pole lighting, and I would imagine probably some kind of simple light on the back is going to be an improvement to the neighborhood, as well as the removal of the parking spaces from the right of way, and the elimination of transient in-use on this side of the site. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other? Nancy.
When they say pole lighting, what kind of a pole are they talking about? Are they talking about a utility pole height lighting? Are they talking about maybe a street lamp height? What's the definition of pole lighting? Thank you.
We don't have lighting on this. What we were visualizing is something less than five foot high.
Post would be a better term.
Post would be a better term. Yes.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else have any comments, questions? Okay. Then presumably the next meeting. Thank you. Okay. So we're going to move on to the wind energy system draft bylaw.
Thank you very much.
And you will see that you have two different versions, one that was on the 23rd, that was earlier than the most recent one, which was put together right after our last meeting. And then on the 24th, there was an amended one. So we're looking at the amended version dated, the draft dated on the 24th.
Is that the emailed one, or is that something that was in this?
Both were emailed.
So it's the same one?
Yes. Yes. So, and I'm going to ask Brian to speak to this, because the changes, we didn't discuss. We should know what the changes were about, but the new changes, I would like Brian to discuss with us.
So you should have a draft dated the 24th in the upper left-hand corner. And you might discuss this at your previous meeting on the 22nd, and I couldn't attend, but I thank the board for its consideration. Mrs. Curry and I have a special anniversary to celebrate, and my decision, I could have been here or there, living, okay. So here I am. And you discussed amongst yourselves, well, you did a nice job going through some proposals with you, and you had indicated at that time on the 22nd that you thought some language was either redundant or not necessary and ought to be removed. I'd like to revisit that a little bit, and I'll start with the purpose section here. I kind of agree that, and you see it in your outline here, that, you know, to protect the public and minimize negative impacts is an obvious deletion. Of course, that's why we're here. But I think one of the important concepts of the board before, and it's really important in your purpose section, because generations to come will use it for their guidance, is the very key word supplement the power used by residents and businesses. The key word there is supplement. I think it really ought to stay in because we're focusing right now, at this level, at this time, on accessory use. And I think that's good guidance to keep in your purpose section, where the previous meeting indicated you thought it should be simply removed. But I left it in for our discussion here tonight. In the second paragraph, wind energy systems prohibited, I think a lot of this language you thought wasn't necessary, but it indicates you that my reasoning why I thought it should be left in. And the key word you'll see there in that paragraph is underlined, it's underlined only for emphasis by myself, is the word modify. There are 11 wind energy systems in town that exist today, and modifications of those systems may not come to you. They may be considered a pre-existing non-conforming use. It goes to the Board of Appeals. And I think this information in this chapter of the bylaw is important guidance for any kind of 240-3 that the Board of Appeals might make as part of its decision. And that's why I've added the words here, and no special permission issue for any wind energy system under this or any predecessor bylaw. And then you can get into the standards that we have, about the 200 kilowatts, not accessory primary use of, the marginal is out here parenthetically, that you said a little about 51 percent, and that's fine, but that's for new applications. That's for applications that are going to come to you, brand new, out of the gate, don't exist. I think it's very important that the word modify be emphasized, and that under this or any other predecessor bylaw language remain for applications that you're not going to see. There's only 11 of them, but all it takes is one. Under the paragraph, wind energy systems allowed with limitations, we did add the language with regards to providing actual electric consumption and then adjusted for occupancy. And where it's, if you're giving me actual data, but your building is only 50 percent occupied, we can make some sort of adjustments there with regards to the type of, or the size of the wind energy system this board might, might allow the applicant to have. So that was good language to have, and we've added it there. And we've added it under the paragraph for definitions, under the definition of accessory. You'll see there that we've added be consistent. We added the words, shall be utilized by the principal, who says, adjusted for occupancy, and then located on the same lot. We adjusted small and large wind energy systems for the, to the .3 to 60, greater than 60 up to 100. And we deleted the term utility scale energy system. Remember, the, it's probably not necessary, you're right, to have that language there if all we're going to have is small, large, utility scale, as we've visited in the picture of this. We added the language certified by the manufacturer on the rating capacity. So it's the name plate capacity, I might just stick that language, so-called name plate at the end of that, but right now we've added that language there. We've added definitions for the vet tower, and we abstracted that language with regards to the dual role of this board and the Board of Appeals based on the size and termination, and where it might be located in regard to the zone. And lastly, because you're actually going to be getting actual data for applications for accessory uses for existing buildings or uses. Under the engineering details, we deleted the load calculation for this building code because you're going to have real data delivered by the buyer. So those, or this is the bylaw that we would like to bring to the public in a form of a hearing. I'll bore on that a little bit later as to what date. And if you have any questions over there now, be happy to.
Does anybody have questions with Brian? Paul?
Brian, I have a question. There's a model bylaw, almost gave by the state last year. Have you used that in consideration of drafting this bylaw?
There's a large volume of information upstairs, Paul. A lot of bylaws from this state, other states, bylaws used by Ford, Nashby, Truro, Kingston. So we have a lot of models out there, or comparative examples to base this on, so that and others.
I think the issue is the state draft bylaw defines small and large systems very differently than we do here. For example, small systems, less than 100 kilowatts, and large systems, greater than 100 kilowatts, and that's quite a departure from the one that we have here. And I'm curious, you know, I know I'm the last kid in the block here, but it struck me as rather unusual to see such a big difference from what the state has suggested for consideration versus what we're considering.
Let me draw you an analogy. You might have comparative examples from the state, other states, other towns, other counties out there, but it's really up to this board to determine what is large and what is small for this community. Here's the example. If I'm in a city or town just outside of Boston, a 10,000 square foot building is my starter shed at the country, not a significant building. But we as a community, and the COT as a region, has determined that that size building is a development of regional impact. It's a big building for our standards. So you are free as a planning board to determine in your own minds, based on your community's standards, what is large or small. My advice to the board is, don't worry about what others are doing. Do what you think is best for this community, for the standards that you believe are appropriate as elected officials, and you'll be fine. Someone might say that this industry over here says this is large, this is small, thank you so noted. This board will vote, it's land use policy as to what is large or small based on what you consider to be appropriate.
But the three wind turbines in town are exponentially larger than what we're considering in this bylaw.
Just, this is all about the future. This is a blank tablet. Anything that's existing will have some status as a pre-existing non-conforming use. But right now, we want to move forward, I'm sorry, the board is moving forward in the future based on what it believes to be its vision of how these land uses will populate the escape. And right now, we're starting, this board has decided to start.
Rich?
Yes, to augment what Brian says, and then I want to add something. The state model bylaws or model things aren't binding in any way. And as Brian says, what, you know, fits a different community from Falmouth isn't necessarily going to fit Falmouth. But we've been looking at this issue very closely in what we believe towns' energy needs are, as well as, without having to say it in the preamble, protecting the public. And so if we wanted to find these things differently, that's what, you know, for those two purposes, that's what we should be doing. The point I would like to make is, I think this is the perfect place to start, have the first public hearing, where all we're doing with this is, we are simply saying, what it is we're going to regulate, establishing a few definitions without getting into any siting standards or performance standards yet. I think that's, this is the time to put it out to the public and say, well, this is what we want to regulate, give us a comments on this, and then we're going to go forward with more specific types of regulation on these types of turbines that we will allow.
We'll have a discussion, a lot more discussion next week on some performance standards and setbacks of that nature, but I think I agree with Rich, this is what you would want to have at the hearing. But in the background, keep on going, we're keep on working.
Yeah, but when we have the hearing, we're just going to confine it to this.
The purposes and what we're doing, why we're doing something, and what we're going to regulate are the two key questions for public hearing in this first.
Anybody else? Paul?
I've read through this several times, and I'm comfortable with the term accessory use. And I realize you've spent a lot of time discussing this in the past. But the concept of wind energy is to try to take advantage of the low carbon footprint and use that wind energy for the benefit of the community. And yet, we're trying to define accessory use as greater than 51 percent of the use on site. That kind of flies in the face of the whole concept of wind energy, because in many of its places, the wind energy use on site is quite a bit smaller than the capacity of the generator. So by putting that in, you're in effect, basically limiting the use of wind energy.
Well, with permission, I can bring up the past history here, is that right now, the board is focusing on an accessory use at this point in time. At some future point in time, perhaps, the board and the town will look at these systems as, as you state, as essentially power plants, as principal uses of the land. But based on what we know today, and the precautionary principle that the board wants to apply, the board is taking a different tact at this point, starting small and then growing larger, instead of allowing something large and then finding perhaps that issues arise, unforeseen consequences. So they're taking a very cautious approach. And that's why the purpose section is so important, that as an accessory use to supplement certain power needs, properties, or principal uses on some, on the same lot, is what the board feels comfortable at this point. It may go further than that, I don't think, right now, but that's the point we're at.
Rich?
Yep. Again, this is just to bring to the public for public comment. This isn't cast in stone at this point, but it's a good starting point. If there's significant members of the public, significant number in the public that want to, you know, broaden that, well, then we will have to listen to them. But as Brian says, this is just for accessory uses, which we are going to start talking about now, and certainly we would have much, much different standards that we would want to be putting into place. If we were going to have a permitted use in any, in any type of zoning district, which wouldn't necessarily be in all the zoning districts that were permitting this accessory use, well, then we would start with a different bylaw that would say, you know, wind turbine energy production for sale to the market can be put into these zones, and we'd have different standards. So I think this is a good start to get the ball rolling with the public hearings.
I was, I didn't have time to look up the original bylaw, the little one, but that helped me to kind of look back and refocus on what we're trying to do. We're trying to update an antiquated bylaw when it comes to wind generation, and I think we need to kind of keep that in focus as well.
And I was of the same opinion as what Paul has mentioned, that I didn't like the idea of the limitation. And I thought more about it in realizing that there's not a lot of, you don't get a lot of profit from what you sell back to the grid. You don't get anywhere near the money that they provide. So after more research, I realized that most of the guys developing like solar panels, for instance, develop it to try to just target what's being used anyway. And if there's a little bit extra and it goes back into the grid, that's a bonus, but you don't get enough money back on your investment. I don't know how it is so much with this wind turbines yet, but I know with the solar panels, they size them that way because it's not worth the extra money to spend on the more panels, because once you've maxed out your electric bill, you've done the job. So I'm reducing my fighting against the increasing the 51 percent now, after more thought, but I was of the same opinion originally. And I guess that opinion would be if we were going to allow the industrial size, if we had a place for it, then that's what would be, and then I would go back to arguing that. The other thing I wanted to mention on a different note is, should we, before we send this off for printing, should we consider a medium-sized range? Because I talked you guys into changing the size from .3 to 10 last week, or I don't know if I talked you into it, but we agreed on it. And I'm wondering if we should have actually gone from the 0.3 to 10 in the small, and then gone from 10 to 60 in a medium, and have three categories.
That was a comment I made, that we've got that mid-range missing in here. The NREL, which is a national research, something laboratory.
Renewable energy laboratory.
Thank you. Okay. I never remember the acronym. Anyway. Anyway, their small is less than 10.
Right.
And I think what we're looking at when we look at small is, fine, you can have it without going through all of this permitting. And we haven't had any problems with those that are 10 or less, that I know of. We've had no complaints.
Except for the Woods Hole Research.
And that's, that's bigger.
Oh, is it?
It's 100.
Oh, is it?
Yes, it is. And they've had to dial that back.
Make a motion.
So when we go up to 60, none of us have had any experience looking at 60s. We just don't have them around here. So.
What you just said.
Yeah, if you want to make a motion that we need that midsize, you can do so, or we can wait until we have further discussion because it looks like Jim needs to say something.
I think this is a really good place to start. I think we have lots of time to make adjustments, and I think we should listen to what other people bring forward. And your suggestion might be very appropriate as we move down the road, but I think this is a really good place to start.
And then get comments.
And then get comments and keep an open mind and go forward.
I can do that, too.
What do you, what do you think?
I guess so.
Reasonable to get the comments and then go back and.
This isn't grave in its own.
Take some more quacks out of it.
What if we don't get any comments?
Well, then we could think about it ourselves.
Right.
To hear it. We can, we can have our own comments.
Right. Right. Because after we get public comments, and if we get none, well, fine, we can come back again and we'll get it ourselves and make whatever adjustments we choose.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay?
Yeah.
We're all, we're all okay with that?
Yes.
I think we've cut enough bait, it's time to fish.
Yeah, but one correction. I'm terrible at proofreading. The Met Tower, instead of equipped, I think that should be speed, Brian, second line?
Page, paragraph.
Page two, meteorological tower.
Not a definition.
Says wind equipped in direction, it should be wind speed in direction, I think.
That was just there to test.
But we really were reading this, huh?
Okay, ask that, the test. Yep, exactly what it should say.
Okay, so does everybody feel that we're good to go for public comment?
Yeah.
Doug?
Should we add one more description? Are we going to ask that these things be certified? I had mentioned once before that there is that Small Wind Certification Council, and they, they kind of weed through the junk turbines and, you know, it helps the person who wants to cite one to, you know, they might have made a bad choice on buying something that's not really performing as it's expected to, or.
You wired it, I'm sorry, Doug.
Just wondering if we should add one more definition for certification and if certification should be part of the initial application package.
Can you do that upfront? I think that's something, because they change all the time with technology. That's probably something we'd have back under your performance standards. Instead of upfront under certified, is my, is my good official thought, but it's a good idea.
It seems like it would help to get them off on the right foot when they're getting started because if they start making all these plans on something that's not even certified, then.
Right, well, let's, I'll tell you what, let me, let me think where the best spot we've got together. That's a good, that's a good point. Probably under some, under application requirements, under the engineering details.
And right, and that's what I was going to say. If we were to say they should be certified, and then in the definition of certification, it could be as by the Small Wind Certification Council, if we want to choose that.
Or equal. You don't want to limit yourselves to just one specific association you would like to say.
I don't even know who they are yet, so.
Yeah, so, but actually, what do you think?
I don't really know either, it's just something I've read.
Let me, let me get back to you as to where that type of.
Should be what the debt agency or any similar nonprofit.
Yeah, we always have to do that so we're not blocked.
Let me, let me get back to you on that.
Paul?
I see the first paragraph in the purpose talks about removal. It doesn't mention decommissioning, and it may be appropriate to include a definition on what we mean by decommissioning. You know, if, if the turbine is not operating for a defined period of time, it may be in effect decommissioned or something like that. So we may want to think about doing something like decommissioning and removal because they are two separate issues.
Okay.
And if we define what decommissioning is, whether it's hasn't operated in 24 months, 12 months.
That'd be elapsed use.
Well, then it's, is it?
It's already defined. Elapsed use is already defined.
Where's it defined?
In our zoning laws, 24 months.
Oh, well, we may want to reinforce it here, too.
And then my last question is, should we mention anything about modeling, or is that just automatic? Does that happen with smaller models?
It depends on your application requirements. You see that we have some noise, flicker modeling.
Mm-hmm.
I think you don't want to tie your hands so much as to define it, but eventually, under application requirements, you're going to have a little more detail as to what you expect with modeling. But we haven't broke down. My sense is, when we go to public hearing, what you're really going to bring is pages one and two. I'm not sure that page three is really fleshed out. But for sure, one and two, you know, what we're doing, why we're doing it, who we're doing it to, is something we can bring out to the public.
Would it be appropriate for town council to review this before we go to public hearing?
No, once you get your ideas as to what it is you want to do, then we'll bring council in or to take a look to make sure it's in proper legal form, but I wouldn't worry about that at this point. I would like whoever asked the board for one consideration. I know you're not going to like it, but I have to bring it up. You are a planning board, and you're a fine planning board. And we have a zoning board, and they are a fine zoning board. I think somewhere, when we go to public hearing, I think you need to at least leave it in there under the, who is going to be the special permit grantor? At least get some public comment. Planning boards do great planning, and zoning boards, I think, by humble, sometimes do a better job than planning boards. I'm talking generically, not this zoning board at this point. Tend to do a better job in regulatory, because that's what they do. But I just want you to think about at least having that language in there when you go out to a public hearing, whether it should be a board of appeal or a planning board. Hear from the public is my suggestion.
Rich?
We just did a site plan review tonight, which dealt with, on a different typo, different subject or context, but which dealt with subject in terms of what we were looking at, much of the same kind of considerations as we would be looking at under this bylaw. For example, Nancy's concern was misstatement by Laura there about a pole. Oh, no, it wasn't pole, it was a lamp post. But that's, we were looking at that in terms of the same kinds of impacts that would be on the site, and that's what we'd be looking at under here. It's similar to site plan.
And I don't want to get into a contest of who would do a better job. I'm saying the role of this board versus the role of the other board. Their role is more regulatory in nature. This board's time has taken up a lot with planning, comprehensive plan, look at your agenda tonight, policy. I'm trying to keep this board and that role more than getting down into site plan reviews and regulatory. So my request and my suggestion to the board would be to at least have, at this point, don't make your mind up yet, at least go out and ask the public, what do you think of that? And all it really needs to do is under the page two, first receiving a special permit from the planning board, parenthetically, or the Board of Appeals, and bring it out there to the public and see what they have to say. It's not that you're going to do a better job, or they're going to do a better job at the particulars. I'm just trying to think that this board's role should be a little bit, this board's role, planning board's role, are typically not regulatory in nature. This board has been drifting in that direction for many years. I'd like to see that continue. Obviously, a lot of board members are going to disagree with that, but that's my job to bring that to your attention.
Disagree, Rich.
I will say this, we don't just do site plans, we do subdivisions. We look at specific properties and we make decisions on whether the plans that we see for those specific properties conform with the bylaws, and we do so in the interest, as we all agree, of protecting the public as well as allowing due process for the, for the landowner's rights. And there's no reason why we couldn't do it under here. Now, one thing we've always known about the Board of Appeals is that they are a relief board, which as a relief board means they tend to look to the needs of the proponent, of the applicant. And we have always looked at ourselves more in terms, in that sense, of a real regulatory board, looking out for the more strongly, and not badmouthing the Board of Appeals. The Board of Appeals is set up to hear people saying, well, I didn't get a, it's in the very word appeals, to get that kind of relief. And what, since we are the drafter of this bylaw, at least initially, I think we should be the regulatory agency that gets it up and running. And then maybe at some point, it would be a good thing to go back to town meeting and say, you know, that we would, it would be our call, give up that to the Board of Appeals if they wanted to do it, rather than have to, you know, look at what the Board of Appeals is doing, and maybe we won't agree with it because we drafted the bylaw, and then they're applying it in ways that we might not necessarily agree with. And then it would be a much tougher fight. So I think we should at least have it in the first instance and see how it works.
Brian, do you want to say something?
It's a common misconception that the Board of Appeals is a border relief. They're only a border relief when it comes to the issuance of ovarions, when they look at terms of equal protection. When there's a special permit granting authority, you are all on equal ground, you, the Board of Appeals, or select them, believe it or not, because they issued special permit for docs and what have these issues. I'm not asking you to make a decision at this point. I know how you feel about maintaining your role as a special permit granting authority. My request and my suggestion to the board is, put it out there for public comment as part of this journey, whether it's the planning board or the zoning board, get some public comment, you can agree or disagree, but I think it's important to get that out there.
Ralph?
Well, Brian, we did discuss this last time when you weren't here. And I just want to reiterate some of the things that we thought. One was, as Rich said, we've done, we've done the majority of the research here, our staff has done the majority of the research here, and so we're the most knowledgeable about this particular issue. But we also have to remember that we have to sell this to the town meeting. And, and right now, the, the, the granting, the permitting authority for windmills is the zoning board of appeals. And, and there, and that, that currently, what, what has been approved currently is problematic. And so I can't, I, it seems to me as though, when we come with a new bylaw, that having a different granting authority makes sense to start with. And it would be new, new, instead of new, old. And so I, I think that the board emphatically, if I recall the minutes, agreed seven to nothing that we would be the granting authority the last time we discussed this. So I just wanted you to understand. If you want to put in there Board of Appeals, Planning Board slash Board of Appeals and let the public decide, that's, that's something we could consider. But I, I think we've discussed it thoroughly in the past, and I doubt if, I doubt if we left it the way it is, there would be any issues with it.
Okay. I'm just going to make a further comment, too, as to my reasoning, again, with Rich, we're the two Oldie Moldies around here now. And the reason I think that we have the current issues with what has been permitted, at some of them, is that I would ask you to remember that the windmill bylaw was woefully inadequate with what we face today. The zoning board of appeals struggled mightily with coming up with the decision that they came up with. They really, really struggled with that, and I have to give them a lot of praise for So I just don't want to let that go unacknowledged. But there's something else, too, is that, as Ralph said, this is brand new, and we will get the instant knowledge as to the problems that are happening here, rather than having to wait to have it filter through the zoning board of appeals. Right now, we have a very good relationship with the zoning board of appeals. That was not always the case, and there was more of an adversarial relationship between the two boards. I would hope that that never, ever again happens. I'm hoping that by keeping it here and waiting to see what happens, we can give the ZBA further direction as to the meaning of this, if necessary. We can make the changes more quickly, if necessary, until we've got it worked through. We have precedence with that with lot coverage. We kept it here until we felt like it, oh, we don't need to handle this anymore. It became a rote sort of thing, taking up a lot of time that we didn't need to take up, and so we brought it back to town meeting and it just got passed. That's exactly what Rich was saying. If we look through this now, we, we deal with it, we make any changes that are necessary, and then after time, if we have enough permits and we feel that this has become rote and the meaning of it is quite clear, then I think we could consider passing it back.
It'd be sort of hubris for us to say, well, this is perfect, so, you know, Board of Appeals, now you handle it.
Right.
Whereas if we handle it for at least a couple of years, and people, problems come up and we see them, we can say, uh-oh, we screwed up.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we'll mow it and be able to fix it at the next town meeting.
I just, I know how the board feels. I was born, I have to bring it up. But all I'm asking you to do is leave the words, Board of Appeals, and let the public chime in. If they don't chime in, I know how the board feels.
We could do that, Jim.
I think, you know, we've discussed this a lot, and I think we've seen an example of unintended consequences of, of moving too fast. And I think this is, we have really studied this hard, we've taken our time and planned. I think it's very, very important that we, we go slowly on, on developing this and keeping it in, in our hands and writing the law, the bylaws properly, and then at the right time, pass it on, if, if that, if it becomes more of a process. But right now, in an evolving situation where we've learned a lot in the last year or two that we didn't know when we made decisions, I think it would be foolhardy to move forward too fast. That's my opinion.
I'll take it up.
Erase it, Brian.
I'll take it up. I had to.
Well, that's what you said at the outset, you had to.
I can't.
We don't all have to speak.
Here, this is, this is definitely.
Take turns with that.
Right. So is everybody comfortable now to, to take this out to the public, at least the first two pages?
Yes, I think at least, at least the first two pages, as Brian said.
Okay.
I'd be comfortable with the third, but if you want to limit it to the two.
The good news is, I'm sorry, the bad news is, we had put an advertisement in for the 12 at the Enterprise, failed to publish.
Oh, guys.
Now, they indicated to me today that, well, I could publish it for Friday for Tuesday's hearing. I found that, no. So I've asked them to re-advertise, I'm sorry, I've asked them to put it in the paper for Friday and next Tuesday for a hearing on the 19th. So you'll have next week to discuss this even further, and we'll have fleshed a little more out for you with regards to some of the application requirements. I put the decommissioning planning in, and we'll be. I put the decommissioning planning in, and we'll be able to discuss this with more further next week. In the hearing, even though I had scheduled it for the 12th until the public and indicated to several people that that would be happening, it isn't going to happen on the 12th, and I'm extremely hopeful that it happens on the 19th.
How will the body of what we're asking for comment on be distributed? Will it be on the Planning Board website or what?
I'll make sure it's on the town's website.
Okay.
We can do a little bit of an email blast for people who have signed up.
Okay.
In the legal, in that ad, I'll put in that, you know, public area draft zoning article for the energy systems, full text is available. Just call up, email it to them, along with the expense of actually publishing it because we don't have money.
Right.
We will publish a small ad, let folks know that it's coming out.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we're going to move on now to committee assignments. Ralph, did you have that, or who's doing it or not? Does everybody want to keep on doing what they're doing?
I guess that's what we have to ask.
Okay, so.
I have, I personally have to be appointed to the Community Preservation Committee, and I asked to be reappointed, but there may be other people here that want to be on, that want to be considered.
Is there anybody else who wants to be considered? Okay, so.
I move Ralph to be appointed.
Great. Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we've got the local comprehensive plan, and Bob and I are on that. I'd like to continue.
I'd like to.
And you'd like to continue too, okay? And I would say that Jim sits in on the, no, he is too, that's, I get confused with these things. So there are three of us on the Planning Board, local comprehensive planning committee. And you'd like to continue too, I assume, Jim?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, is there anybody else who wants to unseat one of us?
Nope.
Okay, can I have a motion that the three of us continue then, please?
I'll move that.
A second, please.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then, this is what I get confused about, Bob and I are on the Economic Sustainability Subcommittee as representatives of the Planning Board, and Jim frequently sits in on that too, because that becomes part of our local comprehensive plan. But it is Bob and I, and you'd like to continue on that, Bob? And I know I would too. Is there anybody else who wants to unseat either one of us?
I'm happy to learn on the slow curve here.
Okay, so could I have a nomination for Bob and me?
I'll move that.
Okay, moved and seconded. And so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. And then you all know that, as I said, Jim does sit in most times on this too, so that he's not missing anything that's going on with the economic sustainability part of it. Is there any other committee that we have?
There's the Coastal Pond Management Committee. I forget the name of the young lady.
Leshaun.
Allison Leshaun.
Thank you. Also must be on that committee, she is the board's appointee. Hasn't been back to see her very often, but that's the other committee that's there. And I also have another committee for consideration by the board, in conjunction with the Affordable Housing Committee Board of Selectmen. It's a committee that would make a recommendation for these local action units or local initiative plan, 40B projects. Highland Avenue is a, it's called LIP Committee. Right now, it's a member of the Board of Selectmen and a member of the Affordable Housing Committee, because both those boards must be voted, to allow someone to apply for a comprehensive permit under the LIP. I think it's very important that there's a Plaid Board representative. It's not a necessary committee, someone can just, you know, go to the Affordable Housing Committee at one of their meetings, go to the Board of Selectmen at one of their meetings, ask for a vote of either one of those two boards. What typically happens is that a representative of the Subcommittee is formed, brings a recommendation back. I think it's important to have a Plaid Board representative on these types of LIP applications. I was wondering if there's anyone interested in serving that role. They don't meet very often, but we have a LIP application coming in on Highland Avenue up in the south. I know once the FALMA Affordable Housing Trust Fund gets rocking and rolling, that these projects are 40B projects, and very often, local LIP projects and local action. I think it might be important to have some Plaid Board representation.
Okay, Jim, I saw you waiting.
I'm interested, I've served on a Subcommittee already for affordable housing on Intitik that we did, and I have some history there, and I'm very interested, and I'm willing to serve.
Okay, does anybody else want to do this? Okay.
Al, dominate, Jim.
Okay, may I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
And then I guess we have to take a vote on continuing Allison, she's not said that she doesn't want to, is that correct?
I haven't had a conversation, sorry.
I will move a subject to her consent.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So Brian, you'll contact her to see that she wants to continue. Maybe we need a report too, from whatever. There's very, it's very unusual when anything's happening that we should know about, so. So that does it for the committee assignments.
Very good, and then as ad hoc committees form.
And then we have the LCP goals and policies on energy, and you all have a copy of that, I believe that was emailed out.
Are there any copies?
There weren't any in our packet, no.
No, sorry, that was emailed out.
Can you all share? Okay.
Yeah, I read it.
I read it, yep.
All right. There are some changes in red, as you've seen, that we discussed and they were put in.
Oh, yeah.
And if everybody's feeling good about this tonight and is in agreement with this, then we could take a vote that that's what we want to send to town meeting, and we'll have a public hearing on what is currently here.
Mine doesn't have the changes.
Well, you want to.
Here, I don't like it, I don't know. Oh, yes, here it is.
Got it?
Excuse me.
Okay.
That's the wrong one.
So if you want to take a little, a few minutes there to read over it and see whether you agree, want to add or subtract anything.
And as, as, this is formed in conjunction with discussions we had with the Works Department.
Oh, that's right, I keep forgetting, we've got a couple of new members here. This didn't just come out of the blue. The committee met with the DPW offices with Ray Jack and Jerry Potamus and Bill Chapman. And out of that, we got a lot of suggestions, a lot of very good discussion, that when it was synthesized, came down to what you see in front of you. We have not sent this back to them for their comment yet, we will do so. I just want to know where you all are on this now, whether this is, you're feeling comfortable with what you see in front of you. Remember, these are the goals, and then underneath the policies. Rich?
By constructing a sewer collection treatment and discharge system, where is the provision by raising all the millions of dollars to do that? I mean.
We don't deal with that in here.
Well, no, but I mean, if we're, you know, that's going to be the taxpayers' question. I mean, and I'm not an anti-tax person, I just can see that coming. I mean, we can put all the goals, and I think we should be more specific about alternative treatment methods and putting that out just as, you know, things like dry composting toilets and other methods of dealing.
Did you read the NICS?
That's right in there.
Yeah. Yeah, well, yes, alternative treatment, I think we should be specific about it. I think we should put some specifics in there so that when people start looking at this, and everyone's going to be, "Where are we going to get the money to do that?" That's a good question, then therefore, we are starting to be getting seriously thinking about these alternative methods that are not so prohibitively costly and that can be done, not on a, don't need to be done on a systemic townwide basis tearing up streets, but can be done on individual lots. I think.
But that's all being considered with demonstration projects? Right now, we have to have a plan in place and which.
Okay, yeah, no, I agree, I just think we should be more specific about.
We can't be in this.
Okay.
What you're asking for, for specificity, it comes under the action items.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
The goal and the policies, goal or goals, we're trying to keep it minimal goals and again, minimal policies, maybe five or six. These are looking into the future, perhaps 50 years, if we should be so lucky.
On the level of ideal and desiderata, I absolutely agree with this.
Okay.
On the practical level, I'm not so sure how attainable it is.
It may not be right now, but when you're looking 50 years ahead.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what we're trying to do here.
No, I agree with it, I agree with it all.
I guess I, again, I should remind the board that the idea of this is to make it a living document so that we don't have to revise it every five years. We want to be able to have the goals and policies so that they live into the future. And then the action items are what we deal with, and we kick it out after it's done and we replace it with new things that need to be accomplished. That's the vision for this comprehensive plan.
I agree with the vision, absolutely.
Okay, so if a vision says, "Well, gee, maybe we don't need to do any searing at all, 100 years into the future, 50 years into the future."
I didn't say we should say that we don't need to do any searing, I just.
Well, some people will, I'm sorry.
I want to be sure that, at least when we get down to how we're going to do this, that we start talking about specific alternative means, so that some people who don't like them are going to say, "Well, then you love spending the money," which is the alternative.
That comes under the action items. This says, this is what we're looking towards, we're looking towards alternatives where they are appropriate. We're not cutting anything out, we're keeping the whole mix in. Okay?
Thinking, I can play for it, that's a beautiful thing. I'm sorry, I can't keep up.
You had to do it. So, does anybody have any further comments on this?
On the goals?
On the goals or the policies?
Yeah, I have a comment on the first paragraph down to energy goals and policies. It looks like it's encouraging the residents to use the best available technology, and nowhere else do we do that. Shouldn't that say, "Falmouth shall utilize the best available technology and not refer to government and residents?" We don't do that anywhere else in the, I'm not sure why we're saying we're going to have residents.
We had a discussion about that, that very thing. We were talking about how people look at when you use the word "Falmouth" that you use the word "town," and I think we want to differentiate and clarify that.
Because there are certain things that we can require the government to do, we can only encourage the residents to do. So that's why we separated them. Maybe, they shouldn't be separated, but we went back and forth on that one quite a bit with that being the reasoning.
Again, I'm a new kid in the block, so I don't know.
It's okay, we were all new kids.
The other issue there is, I'm uncomfortable with the target, because I'm not sure we should be dealing with a particular numerical target. And I think we ought to think about that a little bit.
You mean that no less than 50%?
Yeah, I don't know whether we should be committing to a particular target, particularly if you're talking about 50 years in the future.
That, this energy part came out of, what was it, two years ago, I think, that we were working on that, maybe even three years ago now, that this was pretty much in place. And we had a lot of public input on that. I think when we get to public input, if that comes up, we'll cross it out. But that was the public input, and we did have a lot of good participation in that. We had a very active energy committee, and they fully participated, and a number of residents also fully participated. So for right now, I would say, let's leave that in, because it does give a target, but maybe we do want to change that target or erase it after we have the public comment on this. That's a very good point, Paul.
I made a couple of other suggestions to Marlene, I see she's incorporated several of them there, so I'll repeat them here. The other issue was, under a third bullet from the bottom, it talks about FALMA shall explore where and where an ever-appropriate regionalization, maybe we should just say, "Shall consider appropriate regionalization," rather than get into a complicated wordsmithing there.
When deemed beneficial, FALMA shall explore.
Shall consider appropriate regionalization.
Shall consider.
I think that simplifies it a little bit.
Appropriate regionalization.
Where and whenever seems to be rather indifferent.
Okay, and you want to just, you want to cross out, oh, sewage treatment? Because in this section, we're talking about sewage treatment.
No, I think that's fine.
Okay.
I have a problem with some of the terminology in there, because sewage, S-E-W-E-R-A-G-E is the system.
We had a large discussion on that.
I know you've done that, but generally, people use wastewater more recently.
No, we did have a very large discussion on that, and I think we were defining this as to how we were using it too, so there wouldn't be confusion.
The other thing I noticed, reuse wasn't mentioned in the paragraph, but is mentioned further down, I think that should be a very big item.
What was it?
Reuse. We did mention it, it's buried down there, but in the preamble to the bullets, second set of bullets there, maybe we should consider reuse as paramount, because that's an important element. There's a lot of places we can reuse water.
So you want that incorporated in that introductory paragraph?
Yeah. Where it says, "Treatment and discharge system," should be treatment, reuse, and discharge system or something like that. I think reuse is a big issue.
Okay.
That's on policy.
It goes in that paragraph that's sort of introductory. By constructing a sewer collection, reuse, treatment, and discharge system, right?
Treatment, reuse.
Treatment.
No, reuse, obviously.
Reuse, okay, and discharge system, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, Ralph?
The fourth bullet up from the bottom, there's nothing in the budget process about decommissioning. And I just wondered if, because you talk about the life cycle needs, and then you say capital improvements, growth, expansion, and maintenance, but doesn't the life cycle include decommissioning? And Paul, you're the wastewater guru here on this board, is that, would that be appropriate or not?
Yeah, the movie sections have to be removed. For example, we got this section of wastewater pipe along the beach in the knot, which is, you know, just buried, so that probably should have been removed a long time ago, because it was decommissioned at that time, so it may be appropriate to put that in.
So maintenance and decommissioning?
Yeah, that's my suggestion.
Okay. Brian, you're taking notes on all this, right?
Yes. Reuse, decommissioning. I'm going to compare some notes in the office and make sure we get that.
Okay, does anyone else have any further comments on this? Okay, so we're not going to vote this tonight, because the changes have to come in so that we all get another crack at it. And if you've all taken notes on the changes that have been suggested tonight, you can consider, you can continue to think about it. And we'll get another crack at it after it's been changed. See you this week?
Yeah, next week.
Okay. Yeah, Paul?
I understand this is part of a much larger document.
Okay.
And it's not clear when you take this.
No, it is not, no.
About what's, because clearly, we need a vision or something in there, and that probably comes as part of the multiple pieces to go together, but when you're reviewing this separately, it is a little confusing.
This is what town meeting votes on.
Right.
Just this. I anticipate that what we provide for town meeting would give our introduction, which we hope will be limited to one page. On this one, it's probably going to be two, but who knows, we'll see. Energy, well, energy, it'll be one page. On the water and sewer, it might be two, it might be a page and a half, to give the, to give town meeting members some sense of place with what's going on. What we have now, let me give. What we have now, let me give you a history of this too, because I'm not sure, again, how many people realize this. We started out with a local comprehensive plan that was put together by various committees, one for each of the 14 elements. And it was originally a huge, three-volume document that probably very few people used. It's been revised twice since, and each time, it's gotten a little bit smaller. The present iteration of it is quite uneven in voice because, again, there were still multiple voices being synthesized and made smaller. But it's uneven because one element might be five pages, another might be 30. And they come about it with a different approach for each one of these elements. What we're trying to do is give it one voice and make it very usable. We're trying to keep the introduction to a page to give the sense of what we're trying to do in each one of these elements. We're trying to keep the goal or goals to no more than two, to look out into the long future. That goal should be capable of living almost forever if we've crafted it appropriately. The priorities fall under that one or two goals, and again, they should be capable of living. These are feel-good statements, I think, is how you would characterize them, because we're looking forward to the well-being of the town way into the future. It's those, the priorities and the goals, that town meeting votes. The action items, we will seek by the DPW, meeting with them and saying, okay, these are the goals, these are the priorities that town meeting has voted. Now, let's fill in what you need to do for the next five or 10 years to work towards fruition of these goals. When certain items are completed, if it's working the way we envision, those items will be removed. And there will be other things that need to be shoehorned in as we keep going so that that part of the document becomes a living sort of document, so that we don't have to go through this exercise again, which has now been taking us, I think, close to, well, at least three years, I think. And we're trying to get it so that we don't have to do that anymore. So, for everybody who hasn't heard this spiel, that's why I've given it. For those who have, I'm sorry to bore you, but it's important, I think, that newer people know what the reason for handling like this is. Does anybody have any questions on that? Okay. So we'll see this again. Brian, we'll put the changes in and we'll come back again on that. And let's see. Next thing on here is the intersection project hearings. Brian?
The intersection projects are the key-ticket highway, Jones Road, Worcester Court intersection, stop and shop. The other intersection, we're referring to here, is the old meeting house in Davisville Road, 28. That intersection project now, the Mass Department of Transportation has a 25% design hearing, equivalent of a preliminary plan, its level of detail. For both of those intersections, one on, I believe, was May 19th, the other on the 28th, 29th. Both of them, we see, there were some comments with regards to bikes, bike lanes, markings, trail, laser mapping.
Curb cuts.
Curb cuts were an issue and making sure people can get in and out of their businesses, while at the same time, maintain some of the integrity of the intersection redesign. So, may I take those comments that meeting asked off? We'll take those comments back now, take a look at them. We will talk to the design firm, you know, Green and Pedersen is the design firm actually hired by the town, and we'll take a look at what is usable or not usable as we bring these plans up to 100% design. There's usually a 75% hearings designed here. But because, believe it or not, these hearings went so well, Mass Dot has decided to accelerate this process and go up to full 100%. And they're looking now to hopefully advertise these projects in January of 2013, which will be seven months from now. So we'll see these plans accelerate to full plant specifications and that's probably by the fall. And then actually go out to bid sometime and advertise sometime in January, award sometime in the spring. Might actually see construction out of right-of-way, out of paving construction start up this time next year. Here's the brief report for the engineering design. Now, the landscape design element, I know it's very important, inside the right-of-way will continue. It will advance the discussions, especially in Davisville, and then continue a little bit too. So outside the right-of-way, we need to talk to the property owners. If we can't spend public dollars on private property, they need to get some sort of easement, some sort of maintenance agreement, some kind of swap of property rights so that the landscaping design can advance. We were hoping to utilize the services of Green and Pedersen and Copper Wolf, but we might have to, in the family, vendor that once we get to 100% design now where these. There will be some severances as they make the radiuses a little bit bigger, not big, very small, very similar to what we did back on Terry Drive near Kipcott Donut, very small, very gradual severance, slivers. I'll take those turning radiuses more or less better. So we'll probably vendor that landscape design contract out as these intersections are beginning construction. So when they're done, civil engineers will move out and the landscape designers move in and do a landscape. So we're looking at perhaps doing the landscape design element of it the following year, probably sometime in 2014, and the projects will be then completed. We started them about three years ago. And as I recall, I told the folks down in Davisville, it'll take three years, four years. That's a quick update on where we stand on those projects.
I just have a question. When you say, "We," we'll start on the landscaping, you don't mean the town has to take responsibility for that?
Yeah, the Mass Highway Department, the Mass DOT will work in the right-of-way. They'll do those things. They're not interested in anything outside their state highway. Good news is it's our, it's town money through the litigation front of the Kipcott Commission, so we have a lot of flexibility. We don't have to worry about design standards from on high. It's something that citizens in the area can come up with, kind of with, looking at design construction about the higher end. So we saw it as a preferred alternative. We were going to go through the highway department, bid it up at 100% design with them. I'd rather work with a large insurance company. I love the Mass Highway guys, especially the district people, but let's just, let them do their highway thing and then we move into the maximum value here. And we haven't forgotten, if that came out of the Davisville.
Anybody else? Ralph?
Yeah, Brian, when I, I went to the one for Davisville, and the concern about the curb cuts there were totally legitimate. And how does the planning board chime in on the fact that if we agree that those are legitimate issues, that we let DOT know about that? I mean, I didn't say, I didn't say the planning board feels this at that hearing. I listened to what the people said. But I think the planning board has a role here in telling DOT, for instance, and I discussed this with you once, that if that were new construction on those corners, that we would not allow curb cuts that close to the intersection. Is, how do we, should we discuss the layout amongst ourselves and then send a letter to DOT?
You can do that, and they will listen to you. If you want to bring in the design plans in next week and take a look at them as a board with regards to that very specific issue. I know it came up on Cumberland Farms years ago, coming for plan reviews. The planning board said curb cut wise, no, we think it'll one-way out or whatever. Ultimately, any curb cut on this interstate layout, DOT has jurisdiction over, but they're going to weigh your thinking very heavily.
Well, the public testimony was adamant about those, that particular issue. And I, I would encourage the planning board to take a look at that 25% design layout at our next meeting and see whether or not you all agree that that, that is an issue because I do believe it is an issue. And so did the majority of the public that attended that particular meeting. I did not, I don't know if it's, I'm not sure it's that much of an issue at the stop and shop intersection, but definitely, I mean, in the letter to DOT, I would, if we agree, I would like to emphasize the fact that if that was new construction, we would never allow such, those things, and they can be adjusted when these changes are made.
I'm not sure, but I think the public comment period ended on May 31st. Can we still comment?
Well, we can, we can always.
I was, I attended the meeting last week on the Jones Road. I was a little concerned about the length of time they're working on it. I just want to make sure that they should be encouraged to compress the schedule as much as they can because I think they were stopping and starting and having it go on over a whole year. And I'm not sure it should take that long. I just was, I had a question about that.
Mass Highway Department is a state-owned institution. It takes the time.
I think we should keep a little heat under the feet.
We will. We submitted 25% drawings in May of 2012. A year ago. And we got our hearing in May 2012. So it's more, it's always like riding a rocket. You know, you sit there, you sit there, you sit there, then bang, whoosh, off they go. My sense is they're going to really accelerate it. We'll see construction start. They were very emphatic about that because we are using federal dollars and state, most of this is federal highway dollars. And they're going to want to get, they're going to want to scoop those up as fast as they can so we don't, doesn't go to, you know, hard.
But I think at their meeting, the entire, so it was a whole year in the project, with stopping and starting, right?
Yeah, there's a summertime exclusion on that.
Right.
We are very sensitive to the retailers during summertime here, either on Main Street or elsewhere, not to disrupt the flow of traffic. And so, Mass Highway Department, I keep on calling them, but Mass DOT has a summertime exclusion on that.
I'm all in favor of that. It's just, the entire project seemed to be taking a long time. That's all.
I, when the construction schedule comes in, you know, I'll take a good look at it. I'll talk to the town engineer. It's going from planning to engineering now. It's going to really, goes from planning to operations. I will bring it up to the town engineer.
I also attended a meeting on Stop and Shop Lane, and I felt the same thing that Jim said. When they talked about the schedule, I was amazed how long it was going to take because it's not-
Everybody is. I have been for 30 years.
It was just shocking to me that they were going to take forever. And I thought it would be nice to encourage that to the rest of the time for schedule a little bit. It was, it was a start and stop operation. It doesn't need to be that.
All right, well, you know, they have their-
That's the time of year, excuse me.
Yeah, they have their thinking. I've worked with them for a long time. I guess I get used to it. Okay, it's going to take three years. But I'll try to see how long we can move the construction schedule along. Again, we, we are fortunate here in that the design team is funded through the town. So I'll bring those comments back to the design team, who actually essentially works for us. And say, whatever you can do to get the PSE, get the construction schedule such that it's done, they work, they work for you. So I'll see what I can do about it.
Depends a little bit on the incentives provided, the contract by Mass DOT also. If you recall, they put the bridges in over Route 1 North of Boston over the weekend, and that was a first. And that was very, very well received. But they can do it.
Oh, yeah, you can put incentive contracts out there and Route 1 North of Boston, it sometimes just depends on what congressional district you're in.
Is this correspondence?
Not yet.
I think, I think the town now has, has a perfect example of how quickly a major project can be done by seeing how the Stop and Shop gas station was, was put in. I mean, that was, that was amazing. And there's all kinds of electrical work there, paving, tanks, pumps, everything you can possibly think of. And so, they have that in their mind. And so if we tie up the traffic, you know, they're going to be banging, this room will be full the next time, the next week, you know. So, anyway.
But if I can add to that, your comment about the curb cut is interesting because they cut out the curb cut at the intersection there, if you notice, in the Stop and Shop facility. There was another curb cut right there, going right into that intersection. They eliminated that, and I think that was a very good move.
Yeah, I asked Brian, I said, why weren't we involved with that? And he said, one gas station replacing another, they don't come to the planning board. So-
Were you just lucky they did good planning?
We were lucky that they did it right. Yeah, we are. I'm guessing that the building department probably may have influenced a little, something of that, although, you know, I don't know.
Sometimes it's just in their enlightened corporate self-interest.
Yeah.
Aside design, I wish well.
Self-interest.
Sometimes.
Sometimes, right.
Corporate self-interest and enlightenment are mutually exclusive.
Just to bring it up, sometimes it's enlightened in itself. So next meeting, you want to talk about the curb cuts in Davisville, and I'll see what I can do about accelerating the construction schedule.
So we'll move on now. Are there any committee reports? Okay, correspondence. You're going to have to just tell me what this is, Brian.
Okay, just, I believe that's a good, DRI for-
It's a DRI, a site plan review to demolish existing block and steel building and construct a 24,652 square foot building for a wholesale, retail, and warehouse plumbing facility. And it's at 171 Worcester Court. And the proponent of this is the FW Web Company.
FW Web has filed a site plan review with the planning board. That's over 10,000 square feet, and I referred it to the Kipcott Commission on your behalf. Probably should ask for the board for a motion to refer this application to the Kipcott Commission, just for procedural-
Okay, so we moved, seconded?
Seconded.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion, questions?
I don't have anything in my package about it at all, so this is all news to me.
No, it's just in here. Correspondence.
Correspondence.
Excuse me. What piece of property is this?
Yeah, I'm unfamiliar with it, so I, question floating on it.
What's on there now? This is the old car dealership there on Worcester Court and Springmont Drive. And that building is going to go away. FW Web proposes to build a 24,000 square foot warehouse. They're like Granite Electric, but they're pulling some parts. But because it's more than 10,000 square feet, this board doesn't have jurisdiction until such time as the Kipcott Commission reviews the plans. So when the application is committed, I just instantly send them off because your time clock is ticking as they apply. You're losing days until such time as the Kipcott Commission gets your referral. So I always do this as a matter of course, to save you time once it comes back. He figures, and should, that gives you, gives you the maximum amount of time. Technically, the board should vote to refer it. In first procedural niceties, that's why I asked for a motion.
Well said.
Okay, so as we moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, abstain. Okay, is there any new business that you want to take up next week?
Ralph Kirk, that's him.
Pardon?
Ralph Kirk.
Well, yes, Brian already has that noted.
Yep, and actually, you want to talk about that and the decision on Mr. Fender, energy systems, by law draft, and LPC goals. Essentially, we'll be looking at this again.
All right, so I need a motion for adjournment.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.